What did you say? Oh, I'm on.
You set up with your microphone?
Yeah, I'm on, I'm live.
So we have two minutes.
Okay, give me the high sign when you want to go. Good evening, welcome. Welcome to the Crosslake Mayoral and City Council Candidate Forum. My name is Wayne Holtmeyer, and I'm a member of the League of Government Voters, and I'm a resident of Ideal Township. I'm honored to be your moderator this evening, and we're proud to partner with all five area chambers of commerce and the Brainer dispatch to bring you this event. Special thanks to Pat Netco of Lakes Country Crafts and Coens, T.J. Groutmann, Crosslake Park and Rec Director, and Cindy Megato, Crosslake Chamber Director, for helping with this event. I especially like to thank the candidates, those in attendance, and those watching on Facebook. As you know, we all have the right to vote and a responsibility to make an informed choice. These forums are a wonderful opportunity to get to know our local candidates by hearing from them directly. Tonight's event will be livestreamed on the Crosslake Chambers Facebook page and will be available for viewing until Election Day. Our live broadcast is made possible by a grant from the Brainer Lakes Area Community Foundation. Tonight, we will cover the Crosslake Council and Mayor races. The council has four-year terms, and two seats are up for election this year. The mayor has a two-year term, and of course, only one will be elected. Before we begin, I'd like to cover a few points. First, the views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of the forum organizers. Our organizers do not endorse candidates or political parties. We also ask our attendees to be quiet as possible while the candidates are speaking, so that everyone is able to hear. Please hold your applause until the forum has ended, so that candidates have all the time possible to make their points. No photography or video recording is allowed during this forum. You are welcome to submit written questions for candidates either on note cards provided, and just simply raise your hand, and the note cards will be given to you, and then they will be taken and then screened at that point. Or making comments on Facebook. Questions that are unclear, hostile, or of a personal nature will not be used. We reserve the right to reword or consolidate questions in order to cover as many topics as possible. If you do not get a chance to ask your question, or the answer is unclear, please feel free to speak with the candidates after the forum. Each candidate will have three minutes for opening remarks. I will then ask a series of prepared questions, then audience questions. Candidates have two minutes to respond to each question, and each candidate will have one minute for a closing statement. To ensure fairness, we will rotate the order for answering. If time runs out, I will call time, but candidates are allowed to quickly finish their comments. The entire forum will be 90 minutes in length, ending at 8:00 PM. With that, we will move into our opening statements, and we'll begin with Aaron.
You ready? Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you very much for coming out and listening to us tonight. My name is Aaron Herzog, and I am a candidate for City Council. A brief record on me is I've been involved in local government for approximately 42 years. I started out many years ago in Bismarck, North Dakota, as a police officer, and I spent 13 years there as a street officer, working there. I moved then after that to Blaine, Minnesota, and I spent 20 years with Blaine. The 20 years with Blaine, I managed support services for the police department at that location. There, I managed and supervised the police records, which included data release, data practices, all that end of it. I had the community service officers, and then also had crime prevention, community relations, where we went out and put on a lot of programs, did a lot of that type of stuff. I also had the computers for all of the police department, had to order, purchase, make sure we got what was needed for programs, updated them, and worked with that end of it extensively. And I had to write the budget, I had to approve the expenditures of them, and justify why we purchased what we did. Also, it was involved in various programs, in developing them and creating them, the Citizens Academy, and National Night Out Program, and then a 501(c)(3) called Blaine Public Safety Association. After retirement from Blaine, I was looking for something to do, went to the city, because that was where my most knowledge was, went to Crosslake, and they directed me to planning and zoning. Planning and zoning took me on as an alternate to it. I spent some time as an alternate, and then later on, became a full commissioner. And after the full commissioner, then I became, for the last three to four years, I chaired the commission. At that point, I knew that I had spent enough time with it after seven to eight years with them. And then I got appointed to fill the council members' position, and I've been on the council now for a year and nine months. I feel I am qualified to be on the city council, and I'm asking for your vote and for your support going forward. And with that, I will say again, thank you for being here.
Marcia.
I'm Marcia Seibert-Voltz, and I'm running for city council. My husband and I bought a home in Crosslake about eight years ago, and we retired and moved up here about three years ago permanently. I'm a retired city administrator with over 40 years of experience and knowledge in city administration. A little background of my experience, in general government, I was responsible for city budgets, financial statements, investments, policy development, public relations, debt service, and project management. I had overview of the public safety, police, fire, our municipal ambulance service, also street projects, assessment roles, the municipal library, parks, and the administration of zoning and the state building code in the community. In utilities funds, I was responsible for municipal electric distribution system, municipal natural gas system, and our natural gas system had a 17-mile distribution line, and we served not only our community, but the neighboring community, and we transported gas to the ethanol plant. Other utilities that I oversaw included a water department utility, sanitary sewer, storm sewer. I did utility rate analysis and made recommendations to the city council. All utility funds were enterprise funds and sustainable without contributions from the general fund. The city had over 700 utility customers, and we billed monthly for electric, gas, water, U.S.A. sanitary sewer, storm, water charges, and sanitation. The city also had a municipal liquor store, on-sale and off-sale operation. I had the responsibility of the Economic Development Authority and worked closely with local businesses. Along with that duty, I was the Housing and Redevelopment Director, and worked on housing redevelopment issues in the community. The HRA had contracted me to manage a 25-unit elderly Section 8 apartment building and a 12-unit multifamily complex. Recently, I was appointed to the Crosslake City Council. I currently am a member and treasurer of the Pell Foundation, and I served on the Public Works Commission. I hope you'll take into consideration my experience and knowledge in city administration, and controlling the budget expenditures, prioritizing needs both in operating expenditures and capital outlay projects is a high priority for me.
Dave.
I'm Dave Nevin, and Marcia, that's an awful hard act to follow there. I've lived in town here for 30 years. I raised my kids here. I've had a couple businesses, and probably my strongest qualification is that I really appreciate your tax dollars that are spent. I try to legitimize and make sure that they're spent properly. In the last couple of years since I've been in here, we've done a lot in this town, and I question myself, you know, how much should we do? This town's growing fast. We built a new city hall, but before I got in here, there were talk of a 12- to 14-million-dollar budget to do that. I think we're going to have the city hall and the fire hall done for about $5 million. So I think that's, and it should be 20 to 30 years serve the town, so, you know, I feel good about saving some money. A lot of people questioned whether we needed to do anything, but eventually, we were going to have to. So we did the city hall, that's complete. It was a $300 or $3.4 million project. We came in a little, about 3% over the budget, which in today's world is pretty good. We're currently doing the fire hall. The fire hall's a whole other story, as all of you know. There's some controversy about that, but any issues that are going on with the fire hall, we can correct them, easily correct them. So if anybody wants to talk about that further, I'll do that anytime, but we should be able to hold that in close to budget. We've also done a couple, you know, projects with the county. We did the Rock Dam, and the people who live in Big Pine Lake really see the significance of that. It stabilized the lake, the levels, so they're able to use it. The water would drain out, and they'd lose their ability to get to the boat and get on the lake. We did a stormwater pond up at Manhattan Point, and, you know, it's typically the stormwater dumps into a manhole and dumps into the lake. Well, we're kind of moving towards making settling ponds off-lake, which will allow a good filtration for the salt and the other impurities to get out of there. We did the South Bay Park. That's been on John Hanke's list wish for 18 years, talked about for a long time. We got it done. Eventually, originally, the city was going to pay for most of the South Bay Park, but through the development of it, there was benefiting property owners on the thing, and when it was said and done, these paid for about half of it, 50% of the project. So that's another digging in and fighting for. Almost done, I bet. Boy, I'm only halfway done. Pickleball courts, you know, we've done those, and stop, okay.
Thank you.
Now, if anybody wants to go out afterwards, there's a lot of stuff we could talk about.
Okay, Patty.
Actually, ooh, is that loud?
Just go ahead.
Actually, I hadn't planned on running for mayor. I was happy volunteering in my community, taking care of my yard, and just enjoying Crosslake. But after attending a couple of council meetings this summer, I became concerned with what I was hearing, and as I paid closer attention, I noticed some cracks beginning to appear, a lack of respect for city employees, mismanagement of new facilities, withholding of information, disregard for common practices and processes, and a general lack of leadership. Then I started to hear things like, "Are you planning to run for mayor? I wish you were our mayor again." And so at 3:30 on the last day of filing, I ran over to city hall, signed the papers, paid my $2, and here I am, running for mayor. As I began this part of my journey, a question on one of the many questionnaires we have to fill out was, "List our top three priorities." It turns out, they're pretty much the same as they always have been for me, the economy, environment, and fiscal responsibility. Now, I realize that not everyone will share the same understanding of what these things mean, but they do give us a good place to start a conversation. And that is important, because it's going to take all of us working together to get things done moving forward. As I see it, the economy, the environment, and fiscal responsibilities are all part of the fabric of our community. Our economy is largely dependent on the environment, and being responsible with taxpayer dollars is essential to successfully building the infrastructure necessary for a strong economy. So from my perspective, we need to be looking at the community as a whole, and not as fragmented parts, to be sure there are a lot of things needing to be addressed, including public facilities, city facilities, sewer expansion and maintenance, as well as assessments, roads, parks and trails, green space, and so on. But each has a relationship to the other, and that's what we must keep in mind as we make our decisions. So how do we accomplish everything that needs to get done and do it responsibly? Well, to begin with, it will take a good leader, and I believe I am that leader. I bring a background of proven leadership skills, both in business as well as civic affairs, along with 40 years of experience initiating and leading projects, and a demonstrated competency in bringing people together to get things done. A leader with experience in organizational and process management, who knows how to put a team together and engage with and enlist others. A leader who will bring energy and enthusiasm to the task, and is able to communicate with and lift up an entire community.
Catherine.
Hi, I'm Catherine Funk. And I'm a, there we go, sorry. Good evening, I'm Catherine Funk. Thank you for this wonderful opportunity to be here. I'm running for city council, and I actually have no experience. So I am a mother of six children of my own and three stepchildren. I run a business here in Crosslake. I belong to the chamber, and I am a citizen of Crosslake, and I am a taxpayer. And I figured, I pay taxes, where do my taxes go? And so I figured, I should probably know where they go, and I should have a voice in it. And so that's what made me decide to run for city council. So I have no experience. I've been attending the budget meetings, which is a big eye-opener, when you have taken the cheap seats for a lot of years, and all of a sudden, you're in the front row, really being educated on like, what does it run? What does it cost to put salt on our city streets? Who's in charge of all of the budgets? Where does all of our tax dollars go? So that's what made me decide, and I was like, why not? It's a great year, we have lots of time, COVID is here, and I think that our landscape is changing, and I figured like, now is a good time to be involved in it, you know, under the circumstances. I think that our community has a chance to really go forward with everybody working at home. I feel like having a business on Main Street, I feel like there's a lot more people in our community right now, and all of us can benefit with all those people here. And so I appreciate everybody being here tonight, and I hope that you get out and vote for Catherine Funk.
Okay, thank you. The first question tonight will go to Marcia. You will start. Are you ready? All right. What do you see as the greatest opportunity and the greatest challenge for the city of Crosslake, and how would you address them?
I guess the issues facing the city of Crosslake are capital projects, mainly in the Public Works Department. I think the thing that is very important right now is how we work with the sewer plant. We're facing a project for our biosolids, and we're contemplating a sewer extension. Those are all going to be a timing factor and costly, and it's a matter of whether we can work with the county on that 66 project and complete the sewer project as contemplated. Another thing that challenges our street reconstruction programs, whether we do overlay or reconstruct, because it's less costly to overlay, and we have so many streets that are in need of repair.
Dave.
I think an opportunity that is right here in this world of COVID is that I think we're going to have a tremendous influx of people coming up here. I think we're already seeing it. The businesses will fare very well off of that, I think, if we handle it, but the challenges are going to be, you know, the roads, the sewers, the assessments, the taxes that we have to charge them, and how do we keep up with it? But I think moving forward in the next few years, we're going to see probably a pretty good increase in population, and how we deal with it is going to be the challenge. That's it.
Patty.
I look at the challenges in front of us as opportunities, and I agree with my previous counterparts up here, that the sewer expansion is going to be one challenge, and I hope we can turn it into an opportunity. Our assessment policy, that has been put in place this past year, we need to make sure that we use it appropriately and responsibly. I also agree that taxpayer resources are an important part of our opportunity going forward. Housing, we haven't talked about that for a while, but many of you have or know that Crowe County HRA recently completed a housing study, and that probably needs a revisit from us again. Our city facilities, we are still not done with our fire department, so that will continue to be a challenge, and I hope ends up to be an opportunity for us. And I agree with Dave that COVID-19 has changed the way we will do business, operate, and live up here, and we've already seen the influx of people over this summer. I don't think the streets have ever been so busy with cars, and I know for sure that bunkhouse has never been so busy with walkers. And so these are the things that, when I talk about fragmented parts, we have to bring together and build a community that inspires all of us, makes us all want to work in the community, but somehow make it all fit together, so that we can lift up Crosslake into a beautiful place for us all. But granted, it's going to take a little work.
Catherine.
Would you please repeat the question?
Yes. What do you see as the greatest opportunity and the greatest challenge for the city of Crosslake, and how would you address them?
So just getting into going to the city council meetings and watching them, I don't know a whole lot. So I do know that, I think that we really need to make sure our lakes stay safe, and working with Waipoa and the Loon Center, I feel like both of those are both, you know, high on my priority list of making sure that our lakes stay safe, because we have so many more people using the lakes, that we all see like they're all coming to have a burger, but what's the repercussion of all of the gas and the oils in the lakes? So, and also, with the greater people, the sewer is a huge issue. You know, I think that the sewer, as somebody who uses, you know, city sewer, I think it's a great asset to have in our community, and I really hope that we can move forward with that.
Aaron.
I think the greatest opportunity for us right now is, one of them is the water quality of Crosslake. Crosslake is definitely our bread and butter for our community, the chain of lakes is, but Crosslake specifically. Where our docks are and where our system sits, we have one of the dumps that comes right off of Highway 66, right directly into the Crosslake, the lake itself. And we get to see firsthand the garbage that comes off that highway and that goes down into our lake. And I think if we continue to press the county to work closer to us with it, I think that's an opportunity we can have, and we can work with and help out. Dave has already touched on it pretty good, but the COVID-19 and the effects that it's had into our community, I think is going to be a challenge for us. We have to find a way this coming year to help our businesses survive, not be closed, and to continue to work so that they can prosper and continue to do business. We have some really great businesses here, and I would feel badly if we ended up losing some or any of them, very frankly. I don't have the answers today, but I think, starting next month, we are, as a council group, we're going to be looking and we're going to be working toward that end, and starting trying to figure out what we can do next year to help them. Because it has to come, and we've got some funds that came to us from the federal and from the government, so we need to figure out how to wisely expend them to help and see if we need to put a little extra in the pot. Thank you.
Dave, the second question starts with you. What is your philosophy on balancing the quality of city services with managing taxes and fees?
Well, city services include snow plowing, maintenance, it also includes roads, assessments. I believe the assessments, I don't think the assessment policy has been set yet. They were coming up with a 50 or 60% assessment to people, and I think that's too high. So the taxpayers, the sewer benefits certain people, and so they want the assessment to be higher for that group of people, but I think it benefits the whole community. And I think if we're going to do any expansions or sewer work, whether you're on the sewer or not, we all have to kick into it. So assessments are a huge thing to do. There's a lot we can do with roads. We're budgeting right now about $1.4 million this year for road reconstructs. We get about 20 to 25 years out of a reconstructed road. If we overlay that road, we can do it for 30% of that, or $450,000. So I think we need to overlay where we can, and really look at how we do things. It's real easy for the city to just push it through and say, "Let's do it," but we can stretch our dollars out a long ways. But we can stretch our dollars out a long ways.
Okay, Patty?
Would you repeat the question?
Yes. What is your philosophy on balancing the quality of city services with managing taxes and fees?
Okay, thank you. First of all, I want to thank Dave for mentioning South Bay Park, the 66 Stormwater runoff project, and the Rock Dam, because they all started when I was mayor of Cross Lake. However, it's a great question. And even Jerry and I pay taxes. We, as a city, already operate on a lean minimum staff. So kudos to all our personnel who work to keep the city moving forward. A lot of people ask, how are you going to keep our taxes down? Or from going up? And so I say, what are you willing to give up? Snow plowing, mowing, fixing roads, closing the community center, sewer maintenance, and the list goes on. Two things to keep in mind when you get your tax statement is to look at the market value compared to a couple of years ago. If it went up, you will pay more taxes. And one other thing, our seasonal homeowners pay over 60% of our taxes with no voice. What do they want and expect from our city? So I'm going to go back to my first comment about how all of these things play together and how we make all of these pieces fit into one puzzle that benefits the community as a whole. Thank you.
So balancing a budget, as a family who raised children most of my life, there was always a budget. And so you always took from what the most important thing was, and you worked it down from there. And sometimes even raising taxes or working overtime, you actually had to dig in. And so as a community, sometimes we will have to dig in. That doesn't mean I want my taxes raised. But I think education is really important to the consumers because I think like I didn't have any education of what our tax dollars do for us in our community. And so I just feel like we should educate a little bit more, and I will learn as I go.
Erin?
Matching quality of services and to the taxes. I think first of all, this year, we're starting this year, we have to make sure we hold a line on taxes, how much is asked for, and we cannot be asking for more. In December, we have the opportunity to lower it a little bit more, but that's going to have to fall in line with whatever the expenditures are going to come in at. I think Dave has talked about public works. I think we also need to look at our fire department and our police department and here at the community center and make sure that we're getting what we need from them and that they get the resources they need to continue their services that they're presently giving. I don't want to see any services reduced because I think when you reduce, the city as a whole loses. The taxes have to start to be held better and more accountable. And I think we've taken that first step and we're moving in that direction. Thank you.
Marcia?
Prioritizing projects with the greatest need during developing a five-year plan would be an essential part of matching our services with our budget. The timing of the projects, the capital plans that have been levied must be designated for that particular project and not moved to another project unless the council deems it necessary in an emergency situation. I feel that the budget has to be scrutinized more for designating funds for projects that have been levied for already. We have to consider the facts and the details of each project. And I feel that we are scrutinizing the budget and going over it with in detail. I know at the budget meeting, I voted no on a flat increase because I really feel that we can reduce the tax levy by 2% to 3%. And we're at the flat mark with the tax levy and the budget. So I hope that by December, following another budget meeting, that we can get to the reduction of the tax levy.
Patty, the third question starts with you. What role, if any, should the city play in helping local businesses and individuals recover financially from the COVID crisis?
That's a great question. And so according to the last update of July 2020, unemployment in Crow Wing County was 6.9%. And that will go up in the months ahead. Today, in the United States, 875 million more applied for unemployment. And according to BLIDIC, over 15 businesses in Cross Lake applied for grants through the CARES Act. So it may take a while before we see and feel the effect COVID-19 will have on our community. We can only pray that our businesses survive, and unfortunately, some may not. And this is devastating for us because not only are they part of the economy, but they're our friends and our neighbors. So what is our obligation as a community and as a city? Well, we need to work with the county, the chamber, and BLIDIC to help get them the resources and opportunities to make adjustments in their current business plan on how we can help our businesses in our own community. It's a challenging time that we are in. And so the one thing I know that as a nation and as a community, that we will find a way to take advantage of this pandemic that we are in. And we will look and seek every opportunity that comes our way as a city to work with our businesses.
So I'm one of those businesses. So it's been super interesting to have to dig in and have to ask for help as a business owner in this time. So our businesses suffered about 75% loss in one part of our business. And so to dig in and find different resources has been challenging. Not knowing when I was coming back to work after 10 weeks, or if I was coming back to work, or what would happen. And every day is still uncertain. So helping businesses stay open, it's a challenge right now. And even as a business owner, it's a huge challenge for what I'm doing. And you're kind of always waiting for the next shoe to drop. So for our city to help wherever they can, and even just having local people, even to support our own local businesses, is an amazing thing. And that's the one thing that actually attracted me to Cross Lake, was that our community does support local business. And I really appreciate that. But, you know, for the city to help out, the city will do. I know our city of Cross Lake will help out the businesses as much as they can. And businesses are ethical and strong, and I hope that they all survive. So for the city, I think we need to be fair, and we need to listen to the needs and move forward.
Erin?
Couple of things. Right now, Crow Wing County is offering a number of programs. And they're offering loans and grants, that type of a thing. And I believe what the city should do is to work off of, and in addition to what the county is doing. I would not like to see our money thrown in the same pot with the county and say, do more, because what they're going to do is take our money, give it to Cross Lake, and then pass out additional money to other areas. I would rather that they did equally and fairly to everyone. And then we come in and we try to find out what the unique needs are, whether it's assistance with sewer bills, maybe it's assistance with some other type of help, maybe it's just straight additional grant, not a loan, but a grant that goes to them where there's no repayment involved. And we process them to do additional work for them, to help them in addition to what they can get from the county, state, or anywhere else.
Marcia?
I know people are worried and apprehensive about the future and where we're going to be in another five, 10 years. We need to look at helping out the local businesses with the COVID funds that we received. The city received 172,000. While we've used some of it for COVID expenses, at the last council meeting, I asked the city council to consider allocating 50,000 to Cross Lake businesses and administer it through a grant program. The council hasn't decided on that at all. But that's one of the things that I would like to see done is that the city council shares some of those COVID dollars with the local businesses and make sure that if we do go with the county, like Erin said, we have to make sure that these dollars go to Cross Lake businesses, and they're allocated directly to them.
Dave?
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty hard for the city to step in and pick out four businesses in town and say, we're going to financially support you and help you through this. I don't think we can spend the people's taxpayer dollars that way. But I have gone around and talked to a lot of businesses that I think have been affected. Some of them, hair cutting places that flat closed down, retailers that flat closed down, they were affected early on. I talked to them quite a bit. And since then, they've actually recovered. They're doing okay. There is some COVID money, like Marcia said, there's 172,000 the city got. And I think we should, but I think we have to give it through the county and let them disperse it. I've talked to this Tyler down at BLIDIC, and he's going to actually come to the next council meeting and talk to us about it. But I think they should disperse it just so. I wouldn't want to pick out the four or five people that we help out. But there are some programs. I don't think the town as a whole is hurting that bad. I think the summer has been okay. But we got to do what we can do. Maybe we should talk about some of that COVID money going to sewer relief or some kind of bills that they have to pay or something. But it's pretty hard not to do for all what you're doing for one. So we got to be careful with that. That's it.
Okay. Catherine, the fourth question starts with you. What are your thoughts about local parks, trails, and recreational amenities? And what are your goals in this area?
Well, that would be my favorite subject, playing. So I feel like we have a great community right here, and our community center is outstanding. They have done such an amazing job attracting people. I know that there's people coming from Jenkins and Pine River to use our pickleball courts and our community center, and it's safe, and it's wonderful. The one thing I actually would love to see in our community is safe sidewalks. I have a business in Town Square, and we have the new assisted living there. And every single day, I see a senior citizen walking their dog in the grass. And these people are older. I mean, it's just like they're like one blade of grass away from a new hip. And so we need more sidewalks. We see them walking to Crafts and Coens along the highway because they don't have anywhere to cross safe. We cross our road between here and White Birch every single day to go to the grocery store, and the cars are going 45 miles an hour already in front of the golf course. We need more sidewalks. We need sidewalks to get from Town Square to Crafts and Coens, to connect our city together. I feel like we've done a really great job of parks and rec, but we really need to get the connectivity into our city to make sure everybody can get around in a safe manner and get to the Loon Center. To get, literally to pull on the highway. I have a 15-year-old daughter that's driving, and the cars are driving through town. So these are things that I like to see addressed a little bit more, is sidewalk safety and highway speeds.
Erin?
Parks and trails, I think they're important. They're very important to our industry and to our state as a whole. We have people come from out of the area, and they bring bikes, they walk, they bike. They do all of it, the cross-country skiing, the ATV, snowmobile. And I think we need to maintain trails. Parks, I think, are important. We're trying to get one developed right now, and it's going a very, very slow process, which I wish we could get it going a little quicker and find out where we can go with it or what we can or can't do. But I think they're important. They're very, and you have an excellent facility here to work with them for and to keep them going. They're just important, and we have to keep them into our budget as much as we can and not take them out. Thank you.
Okay, Marcia?
I agree that the parks and the trails are important to Cross Lake area. That's what brings people up to the area during the summer and during the winter on the ski trails, the snowshoe trails. The pickleball courts were a wonderful addition to Cross Lake this year. Every time I go by, people are out there on those courts. They're constantly being used. That was a good addition to the park area complex here. And the South Bay Park, where the development, that could be a real asset for Cross Lake in the future. I guess the parks and trails are just what attracts people to Cross Lake. And I love the Cross Lake area. That's why I retired up here. And I hope that we can continue to keep developing the parks and recreation for Cross Lake and visitors.
Dave?
I think those of us that have lived up here for 20 years plus have seen a lot of trails go at. West Shore Drive, Anchor Point, Manhattan Beach. Anchor Point and Manhattan Beach were both just last year. And the trail systems, the more you do, the more that people want them, which is good. You know, we got to figure out how to budget and pay for them. In 2024, there is going to be a grant of about $600,000 to $700,000 that the city is going to get for trails. And I think it's going to be focused in the downtown area. But there's a lot of support for that. There's the park behind Andy's, too, that is, you know, we've talked about, talking about it, but we haven't got together and talked about it yet. But, you know, that's long-term, and Little City Park right in town be a good thing. There's a lot of people that support it, and there's some people that don't. But very important, a lot of demand for it, a lot of interest. It's just coming up with the money for it. But I think we are working on it. We're doing it. We've done some. Each year, we do a pretty good trail system.
Patty?
I love that question. When we talk about parks, trails, sidewalks, we have to look at what we call green space. And what we're learning, and what I've learned through our Blue Zone study that we had here a couple of years ago, that green space builds communities' economies. It attracts more businesses. And right now, probably most important, it's the health aspect of it that it provides our people who have been clustered in homes and the need to get out. But I absolutely agree with Catherine when we said that sidewalks are the connector between Town Square and the shops on 66. We got to get that accomplished. And I absolutely agree with Dave. The space behind Andy's needs to be turned into that connector park. And so I am in full support of providing more parks, more green space for the residents of Cross Lake. And one of the reasons I'm particularly fond of this community center is because of the pickleball courts. And for the first time in, over Cross Lake days, we're going to have a competition on our pickleball courts. And so I've always said, how do we turn the community center into something like the Cayuna Bike Range? How do we make that an economic opportunity for us? And so here, we have our first 26 teams who are signed up, and they're going to be contributing, probably not a lot the first time. But I know that this can become a major event for us in Cross Lake.
Okay. Erin, the fifth question starts with you. Suppose the city council is tackling a controversial issue. If elected, how would you decide which way to vote?
Controversial issue. Number one, you need to listen to what the issue is. You need to draw and gather in as much information as you can. And then you need to, I think, a big key part to that is you need to look at it. And then you need to, I think, a big key part to that is, is you need to look at it through a set of eyes is what is in the best interest of the city of Cross Lake? And then you have to start going from that. There's going to be controversial issues. There has been, there will be. And you have to address them and you have to work forward through them. It's a part of it, but I think getting as much information as you can, listening to the people that are affected by it the most, and then looking at it through the set of eyes, what is in the best interest of the city, not any individual or group. Thank you.
Okay, Marcia?
I guess if there's a controversial issue, which I've kind of already went through, but I guess I would make sure they get all the facts and the details and the information to base a decision. I'd listen to the citizens and I'd make the best judgment and decision call in regard to what's best for Cross Lake and its citizens.
Okay. Dave?
I think a controversial issue, I'm thinking back over the last two years. And one of them that was a real controversy was the building the new city hall and fire hall. And I think the best I felt about it is that we formed a citizen committee. We had about twenty citizens with staff on it and met for three months and kicked those issues back and forth and sideways. And everybody came up with a plan that was agreeable. And so I would turn it back to the people and get them involved and get their input and help come up with the solution.
Okay, Patty?
Controversial issues will always be part of a city. And so number one, I agree with what my people have said up here that we have to be information leading, laden. And we have, that means doing the research, going after additional resources. Sometimes I feel that we don't always take that option. Get, making sure that we have fact over fiction. And probably most of all, find ways to communicate with the community. Yes, we hold public meetings where everybody can come, but for some reason, there is either the lack of interest or they don't know about it or they don't care. And so we have to change that. We have to change that. And so when we look at electing our future leaders, we have to make sure that they are able to engage the community, provide the detail and the information that they need. And to let them know that who they vote for on the council, they vote, assuming that they're going to make the best decision for the community and the residents that reside in it.
Catherine?
So I've been to a few city council meetings and I, the first thing that probably brings to my mind is when there is controversy is probably taking out the emotion of it and looking at all of the facts, like all of the facts being presented for you. And then taking a step back and really analyzing the information before a decision is being made and then move forward with it. But we're in a, we're kind of in a world right now where everybody wants to point a finger instead of really listening. And I feel like just listening before you act, getting the information and moving forward. And that's how I would hold my position.
Marcia, the first audience question goes to you. Crow Wing County recently passed a short-term rental ordinance. How, if at all, should the city address the increase in the number of VROB properties?
How should the city address it?
How should the city address the increase in the number of VRBO properties?
I'm not real sure what the county has passed, but I was under the assumption that that the county was going to have an ordinance on VRBOs and that the number probably would be addressed through that ordinance.
Okay. Dave?
I don't know how we do the number, but there's some regulations. And if the VRBOs came into town and they're going to, and the county is doing this, they're going to have some high standards for sewers. If they list eight bedrooms and sleeps twenty people, they better have a sewer that'll handle that. And hopefully the county will police it and look at it. And if not, then the city will probably do something in the next year or something. But the noise, the nuisance in the sewers and the parking, dogs, animals, those are the issues with it. And I think if people abide by the rules, I don't know that we've talked much about having a number control on them. It's more of the noise and nuisance.
Patty?
So the ordinance regarding VRBOs will go into effect on January first at the county. And planning and zoning in Cross Lake has said, let them get their feet wet first. Let them iron the bugs out before we tackle, before we tackle it at a city level. Though one of the things that they will, a VRBO will have to do is to register with the county. So I would assume that if that works for the county, that perhaps may be something that we do at the city. I had been to a number of the public hearings regarding VRBOs within the county and there was almost a split. The people who owned VRBOs really had no issue with some of the policies that were being put in place. And so I think what we'll do is to watch the county and how they operate for the next year and then revisit it beginning January twenty-two to see if that fits into, to see if any of it fits into our community. But I do agree with Dave and Marcia that we will be looking at the amount of sleeper, sleeping accommodations versus the sewer capacity. That obviously leads to water quality and that the noise, the dogs, the partying until four AM will also be a consideration and how we deal with that.
Catherine?
So all of us businesses in Cross Lake really appreciate VRBOs. So I know other communities have kind of shut them down and we definitely don't want to shut them down. There is not enough hotels to support all of them. But I also feel like, I do hope that the city actually has a little bit of more ordinance over top of them to make it all a fair playing field and it's also safe for the people coming. I think that there's always a few bad apples when they stay here, but we can't put everybody in the same category. But we need them for our community, for our golf courses, for our restaurants. And, but you know, really holding, holding some responsibility for the homeowner and for the tenants there of what's expected of them while they're here enjoying our beautiful lakes.
Erin?
A couple of the things that have gone on with it. I did not realize until recently the level of homes that are being purchased for this purpose. A gentleman I was visiting with yesterday, his next-door neighbor sold his home. It's a million-dollar home. The guy rents it for anywhere from twenty-five hundred to five thousand dollars a night. And he rents it up to thirty to forty people at a time. This is huge, huge money, people. Huge money. I did not have a concept on what was, a true understanding of what was taking place. I apologize for that. But I think one of the things that we need to be careful, and I agree with what was said. We need to let the county have their ordinances kick in. We need to find out what the county, what effect it's going to have. It was also talked about on the sewer systems, we're going to have to monitor them very, very strongly. And I, I'm not sure that these people are all paying sales tax and so forth on the rental like the, like the resorts and stuff do. And I guess I would like to see them be brought into an even playing field with the resorts, okay? Because I don't think it's an even playing field today. And also I think it becomes a bit of a revenue issue as well for the county and for the city. Okay, and, but I do agree. The benefits that come in from they sell so much more food and so forth, it's a true benefit. We're a destination community. That's what that is. Thank you.
Before we start with the second question, I'd like to encourage any audience members, if you do have questions, please submit them at any time, but we are running low on audience questions. The second question starts with Dave. This is the second audience question. What are your thoughts regarding the sanitary sewer extension between County Road sixty-six slash sixteen and Moonlight Square?
Well, I support that extension. There's two extensions in town that I support. One right behind the New York City Hall, the people down there really want it. I think the capacity at the sewer plant is at sixty percent arguably. And if we put two new extensions on, we're going to get it up to eighty percent or something, which makes it run more efficiently. I think the sewer extension up to sixteen is a good, we haven't done a sewer extension in town for fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years. I think we have the capacity there. We should utilize it and move forward with it. The county is talking about redoing the road in 2024, you know, certainly by then. We've actually got a grant for like three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to upgrade the storm sewer on sixteen. But you know, we're putting in for an extension for that now. I think we need to do it. We certainly don't want to lose that grant money for the storm sewer. So we got to watch and see what happens, but we've got all the design done for it. It's ready to go out to bids right now to do it and I support the project.
Okay, Patty?
Yes? Oh, you want me to answer the same?
Yes.
Oh, okay, sure. Yeah, well, so this is what I know and a lot of it has already been said by Dave. You know, that the county highway department is ready to look at redo, upgrade the County Road sixty-six in 2024. We have the grant available for the storm water runoff, which is, has an extension right now. Extending sewer to Moonlight Bay, Moonlight Square, who are vital businesses in our community. That's important. Moonlight Bay's septic system may be, you know, a little shaky. So we have to watch that really closely because they put in a different style to help them through the next two to three years, hopefully. The last I heard that the homeowners on sixty-sixth may not all be interested in hooking up to the sewer, which I can understand. So we do have a few challenges, which also includes the cost. So I don't have the answer to unite, for you tonight. However, it is our job as council members to find the right solution and that makes sense for our community as we move forward.
Catherine?
It's kind of a no-brainer to expand the sewer down to Moonlight. Moonlight is a huge supporter of our community. They support our school. They support the PALS Association. There is a ton of traffic. It's like a main focal group for everybody who comes to town. And if you look at new putting in, if somebody's sewer did fail along that road, a new mound system, you know, starts at about fifteen thousand dollars. So if each person even had to pay a hookup of ten thousand dollars, it's still cheaper than putting in a sewer that would fail that's right next to our lakes. So, I mean, we're, at the time, our community is growing and the things that make our community grow is sewer, phones, water, things like that. And as a person who is hooked up, I feel like it's a great asset for my business to be hooked up to city sewer. And I feel like it's, I hope it moves forward.
Okay, Erin?
I'm very much in favor of the project moving up to sixteen and connecting all these people. One of the things though that came up and slowed the project down, I think tremendously, is the fact that it, and I'll just give one example. It's a small, small operation, church. And because of the size of their property and everything, their cost to get hooked up to the sewer was going to be like a hundred thousand. It was a huge amount of money. That honestly, I don't know a church around here that would be able to just come up with that kind of money to do it. So I think council needs to give the Public Works Commission proper direction on where to go to get the costs in line and who's going to pay it. And this will become a budget issue, folks, because at some point it's, I'm not on it, but at some point I'm going to be paying a few more dollars for it for that reason. And that's, that's, that's okay. I can, I can live with paying for it because I benefit from it, because the businesses benefit from it and we keep the community healthier. It's not a matter of if some of those systems along the way are going to fail, it's a matter of when. It's not if, it's when. So we need to, I feel we need to do it sooner than later. But I am a hundred percent agreement. We need to address the costs that are being assessed out to the people.
Marcia?
I support the sanitary sewer extension. I think timing is an important element on it. If, if we can actually wait until 2024 when the county does sixty-sixth project. An important other piece is that the Public Works Commission is studying it. And I would hope that they would have a good recommendation for the city council as far as when and how to proceed. I know there'll be tax dollars in it. We'll have to budget accordingly for it. The assessments, I know there are some people that probably don't want to hook up right away. I think there was some discussion about whether there could be a timeframe of when some of the homeowners would hook up to, give them a timeline for when they would need to be hooked up. But I think that it's an extension that I would certainly support.
Patty, the third audience question starts with you. With the potential for new commercial development, what is your opinion on the intersection between Andy's and the Cross Lake campground?
Well, it has been, it has been under discussion for a long time. However, the feasibility study on traveling, walking through Cross Lake said that right now, there, it was going to remain as, it was going to remain as is. I think that when we look into the future, we have to look at the community. What are they looking for? For now, we know that they don't want a stop sign in that corner. Are they going to want a roundabout, which a lot of people seem to think is the only option? As we develop commercially, I think that it's going to have to be revisited and find a solution that is acceptable to the community. That corner is tough. It's tough for people to walk across from Andy's to the core. And it's oddly enough, an intersection that has not had an accident, which is really hard to believe, which speaks to the general public knowing what a intersection that could, a dangerous intersection that could possibly be. So as we look down the future, and that's sometimes a hard place to look for, and we talk about commercial development and where that's going to go, I see a roundabout as one of our only options. I don't think people are going to be happy with a three-way stop there. I don't think people are going to be happy with a stoplight there. And we have to understand that we have to get people through town and around that corner. Thank you.
Let me read the question again at the request of one of the members. With the potential for new commercial development, what is your opinion on the intersection between Andy's and Cross Lake campground? Andy's and Cross Lake campground? Catherine?
Well, as every single city is doing, everybody's driving in circles. So a roundabout is actually a safe way to move traffic, it's a quick way to move traffic, it's a great way to slow traffic down, and it keeps, and it actually will keep our town actually kind of making still feel like a home little town without a stoplight, or having people back up with a four-way stop. So, you know, continue with what the trend is and drive in a circle.
Okay. Erin?
Potential new development, two, three things are affecting us and are, I think, are hurting us. One is, this is considered a very wealthy community, so people cannot get breaks coming from the state on taxes and so forth to help them out. That's one of the issues. Another one is, they want to pack the land so dense, that property back in there behind Andy's, they wanted to put in, what was it, three and a half or four and a half times, Dave, the, the amount of business that was allowed to be in there by our standards. You can't pack property that deep and have it not have negative effects throughout the community. I don't know how to get somebody in there. The property behind Andy's, I'd love to see that become a park. I think that's an excellent spot for one. I don't know if it'll ever get to be one, but I think it would be a good one that would help feed the downtown with parking and with other events that could be held in it. So I guess I would like to see new development. I don't know how we can get it to come about unless we start tearing down buildings, and that affects current business, and you don't want to do that. I don't think you should do that. So it's, it's a dilemma. It's one of those, it's, you're darned if you do, and you're darned if you don't. I want to see development come in, and I want to see something happen. But COVID right now is having a negative effect on anybody wanting to do much. Thank you.
Marcia?
Can I interrupt and ask for a little clarification? You're asking for commercial development between Andy's and the Army Corps. So are you asking for traffic control? Because there is no commercial space in that area.
You've, well, I can't interpret the question. You've heard it, you've heard me read it twice.
I don't understand the question. I'm sorry, Marcia, go ahead.
Marcia, you're next.
Okay, I think that Cross Lake has to take a proactive look at commercial development. As far as that corner, I'm not sure what should be done. I've been told stop sign is out of the question, stoplight is out of the question. So you get back to, okay, roundabout, is there enough area there for a roundabout? I'm really not sure what should be done there. I haven't had a chance to look at the pedestrian study that was done. I'm not sure there's any detail in there about what should be done at that intersection. But, not real sure, but it, to me, it looks like the only avenue we have is the roundabout.
Dave?
Okay, I'm going to answer that like it was talking about traffic control. I'm opposed to a roundabout. I think that would just be a nightmare down on that corner with semis and campers pulling boats and tourists coming in looking for the coffee shop and how to turn and whatever. So there are some other routes that we could improve and get people through town, but as far as a roundabout, no, you know, we've got some very congested times on that intersection, but most of the time it's not bad. And so to change everything, at least right now, July is not good on the weekends. We've got a month of tough time on that intersection when church is going on, it's busy, but I think there's got to be a lot more studying before a roundabout comes out.
Okay.
Other than that, there is no commercial space in between Andy's and the Army Corps. So I don't understand that, but.
Okay. Catherine, the fourth audience question starts with you. In your opinion, what is the top issue facing the police department, and what role, if any, should the city council play in addressing it?
Say it again.
In your opinion, what is the top issue facing the police department, and what role, if any, should the city council play in addressing it?
I know nothing about the police department. I know that we have six officers, I believe, and that's as much as I know. I do not feel, I feel like there's a lot of disruption with police at this time in our country, and I feel like ours are outstanding from what I have had to ever encounter, which I try not to. And I feel like the city council will stand forth on any disciplinary actions that would ever have to be done with our police, which I don't ever foresee in the near future.
Erin?
I didn't get the first part of that.
Okay, I'll read it again. In your opinion, what is the top issue facing the police department, Cross Lake, and what role, if any, should the city council play in addressing it?
What's the top issue facing, facing the police department?
In your opinion?
Yeah. I think the, the top issue facing them is, is to maintaining a balance between how aggressive they get on enforcement and how lenient they get. I think there's a, there's a fine line that they have to ride and work with. I think that's a difficult one. If people are having an issue with the police department, they should contact the chief, if it's something that they feel appropriate to bring to his attention. If they're not comfortable there, they should go to the city administrator and voice that opinion to him. And if they're not comfortable at that level, they should take it to the mayor. And they should visit with the mayor, and then let the mayor decide whether he sits with somebody on staff or brings it to the council level. But I think there's a, there's a progress, a process in there. There's a balancing act where they have to go out and they have to do their job, and they've got to maintain order within our city. And I think this, as far as what the council should do, council should stay out of it unless there's a problem. If there's a problem, then they should address the specific issue.
Marcia?
I'm not aware of any top issue in the police department. I believe the city provides a good budget, and they're allowed to get the equipment that's necessary for the police department. There's six officers, and I found out the last council meeting, there's six squads. But it seems to me that the Cross Lake Police Department is efficient, and I don't see any issues that I'm aware of that float to the top.
Dave?
I don't, I don't, I'm not aware of any issues with the police either. I think they're doing a great job. Coverage 24 hours a day might be a little bit of an issue. You know, there's talk about hiring more. I think we've got six in town, I think that's plenty. I think we've also got a great first responder network in town here, that they could work together. I don't know if they do or not, but certainly if there's a medical or there's a fire call in the wee hours of the night or morning, they respond to that. So there is coverage by other things. But I am not aware of any issues with the police department.
Patty?
Yes, I agree. I don't hear of any issues with our police department. I think they do a really good job. I did make a couple of comments here, and this was after visiting with our chief, Lee, and what he said was that COVID has, had, has changed a little bit of the way that they address our city today. One of the things that it has affected was all of the training and the education piece that our police officers take have been online. And so that has taken a lot more time to get accomplished, instead of going to a conference for two hours in learning. And the other focus is like, thank goodness, we don't have a lot of violence in our city, and, but we do have retirees. And so when we think of our police officers, where are their major responses going to be? And typically, they are with a community that is older. And to David's point, we have great EMTs between the fire department and the police department, and the EMTs, which we have personally experienced at our household. I would stack up our police department against any other community the size of ours.
Okay, thank you. Erin, the fifth audience question starts with you. How would you manage the growth of Cross Lake while still retaining its up-north atmosphere?
Grow Cross Lake with an up-north atmosphere. That's an interesting concept, but I think right now we are doing that to some degree. We're seeing change in, in how the buildings look. You look at some of the newer buildings that are being built, such as our, our school, such as the senior complex that's built, they are not a traditional up-north look. And I think we have to continue to look at each individual growth item that's coming in, and allow them to grow in, in the direction that is appropriate for that type of function and that type of a business. I would like to see more growth come in to this city. I think we need some additional growth, and hopefully we'll, we'll get some as soon as things lighten up and come, get going again for us.
Marcia?
Well, I think Cross Lake does a wonderful job on the up-north atmosphere. I came from southern Minnesota, so I think it's real up north up here with, with everything that is provided. I think that a, I don't know how you increase business for the up-north theme, but I guess I'd be all for any businesses that wanted to expand in Cross Lake or grow their business in Cross Lake. And the up-north theme is, I think it's here. So, and I hope it continues, because that's what attracts people to Cross Lake, beautiful area.
Dave?
Up-north atmosphere is changing each year. It's not the same as it was 30 years ago. But I, I think to keep the up-north atmosphere, I think we've got to keep a very diverse group of people living here. We can do that through managing our property taxes, making available housing, keeping, you know, I'd like to see this community stay so that the people that you hire to cut the lawn can live in town, and not drive the taxes up so high that you're pushing them out. As far as, you know, businesses and promoting that, I mean, that's just going to come. If there's a demand, somebody's going to fill it. Unfortunately, there might be a lot of competition, and, and we see that now. And I don't know who to pick on, but if somebody wanted an additional liquor license, we got six or seven liquor establishments saying, no, we don't want them. But that's kind of hard to manage that. But I would like to keep the tax base, make it affordable for all different kinds of people to live here, keep the school going. That's it.
Okay, Patty?
Would you repeat the question, please?
Yes. How would you manage the growth of Cross Lake while still retaining its up-north atmosphere?
Okay, great. Well, in order to continue our growth, we have to make sure that we keep our whitefish chain clean and preserve and conserve it. And so I think what's interesting is, a couple of months ago, I was at a planning and zoning meeting, and there was a piece of property that was going to be split into five different lots. And of course, they were all in compliance, so there was no issue. However, what I, every chance I say, I remind them, okay, we're going to have five new lots, now we're going to have five new families with at least two boats on each property. And so when we think of how we preserve or conserve, more importantly, conserve the whitefish chain, how are we going to do that? So that's one thing I think we have to keep in mind. Because I've always said that the whitefish engine, or the whitefish chain is the economic engine of Cross Lake. The other thing, in order to keep our up-north field, we, up-north field, we have to plant more trees. Not only does that keep our, that are up-north field, but it is also very good for the environment and the air we breathe. So that is also important. And one of the things that came out of the Minnesota Design Team, Erin, and you probably remember this, is that one of the comments what said was, we don't want to be another Minnetonka. And so we do have to address or make people aware that when they move into this community, they love it here, and we want them to make sure that their home, their business fits into this environment. And then we, when we think of looking for businesses up here, we don't have a lot of, we don't have a lot of space. So there's not going to be a big business park, or industrial park, or a big manufacturing. So we have to look at, what type of business do we want here in Cross Lake? And I think it goes back to technology, and also the ability of working from home, but have a place for them in case they need to have a video conferencing room or a conference center or printing and such.
Okay. Catherine?
So I grew up here, and I graduated from Pine River, so I see everything growing all the time. I've also traveled the world, and I also see what is out there besides what's in our small community. So to keep it growing, having some of the modern things brought in is an attraction to the younger generation, my generation and my children's generation, not just having the same old log-sided building. Having affordable housing makes it a, a big attraction, keeping our taxes down, keeping our communities safe. Like where we live in our community, back in our little neighborhood, it's a great place to raise a family, and you feel safe. And it looks like we all belong there. The homes are clean, the city has great ordinances to keep our, our, you know, everybody's land is clean, there's no junk holes. And that's, will help everybody be more attracted to live here. Nobody wants to see a rundown house next to you. So, customer service, you know, that, that's all right here in Cross Lake, and keeping people educated, and that's what's attractive here in Cross Lake, so.
Okay. Marcia, the next audience question starts with you. How, if at all, should the city support the development of the National Loon Center?
I'm not real sure what the city's position is on the loon center. I think it would be an asset for Cross Lake to have the National Loon Center here. I'm assuming that federal dollars would go into it. And I don't know if it's, if the city council's been approached by the entity, the loon center. That I'm not sure about, but I would hope that the, the city of Cross Lake would support the loon center.
Okay. Dave?
The National Loon Center is a federal project, so we don't have any direct involvement with it. If it comes, there's going to be a lot of infrastructure, there's going to be parking, there's going to be things that we're going to have to work with them. So I think we're kind of on a hold position until they get it done. Parking is going to be an issue. The parking study says it's not, but I disagree with it. So that little piece of property behind Andy's is a valuable piece of property to hold for that. It would fill that thing. But I think we're just kind of on a hold and see what the intersection turns like, the walking trails, if we're going to move forward with them anyway, the connectivity portion of it, and we got to just wait and see what, if the feds come through with the grant money or whatever the money is for the loon center, and if it goes.
Patty?
Well, a lot of you know that I was opposed to a loon center, the core property. However, I've also said that if that is the only option for us, I've always been for a loon center in Cross Lake. And so I agree with Dave up to this point. The city has not been asked to support or be a part of it in any way. But the two things that I would ask that we keep in mind is that it gets back to the original question. It has to fit into our environment, and... And I love our school, it's so important. But it was far apart, it was far away from an up-north field in the design. But that's a school. And so I think that it's a great piece and an asset to Cross Lake. When I think of the loon center, I don't want another glassy-looking building. I want one that fits into our environment. And if you've ever been to the Wolf Center in Ely, which is about five miles out of town, you will note that that building is designed to fit into that environment up there. And so we've only seen conceptual drawings of that. So I'm assuming that if we are able to sit down with the loon center at some point, you know, we will maybe have some input. And then since we really only heard conceptually, I think it's very important for the council to be aware of a business plan that they have and how that might project into the city at some future date.
Catherine?
I think we can do nothing but win to support the loon center. We need a main attraction, you know, we don't have, you know, we don't have a theater, we don't have a bowling alley. We need something to help our children. There's jobs that will bring to our community, there's education, working with the different waterways, the DNR, the parks. All we can do is win, and by having the city help support some of that, not to necessarily build it, but, you know, to work with them and not to fight against them would just benefit every single one of us in our community because we need an attraction that isn't involved in a fishing pole or a boat because not all of us live on the lake. And so to have this here in our community, it's a great way to educate our children for the next generation.
Erin?
One, I'm in support of the loon center. I would like to see something take place and happen. But it's going to be a difficult process because the county has came in and said that they want to put in a roundabout there. The roundabout there would take out, basically, it would take out Andy's parking lot because the Corps of Engineers has made it very clear they're not going to allow that road to come in onto their property at all on that side of the street. Everything is going to come, and in fact, it will go into the village, and it would take out part of the village. So that stuff, some of that would have to be relocated. It's going to be a lot of gnashing of teeth when it comes down to it. I think Dave hit it pretty square when he said we're going to have to look at something to help them out with parking, to do something in that respect. If, maybe a little sewer, but that would be minor compared to what their, I think their true need would be, which would be parking and access to the facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, this concludes the question and answer, question and answer portion of the forum this evening. We'll move to the closing statements. Each candidate will have one minute for a closing statement, and we begin with Dave.
Well, thanks for coming and showing some interest. I guess my closing statement would be, if you want to put me back in the mayor position again this year, what I would tell you is you have a voice. I will be here to listen to you and let your voice be heard. I will be as respectful of your property taxes and spending money as I think anybody has been, but as I can be. And I give you my word that I'll represent the best I can.
Okay, Patty?
During my first year as mayor, Guy Wannable came into my office at City Hall one day carrying the Northland Press under his arm with my monthly article in it and said, where did you get your leadership skills? And you know what? I didn't know what to say, which may come as a surprise for some of you. But I grew up on a family farm, I've lived in a big city, and now call Cross Lake home. And we are a diverse community with residents who were born and raised here, others whose jobs may have brought them here, and a retiree committee as well, community as well as seasonal owners. But one way or another, all have a role to play and can have an impact on the success of Cross Lake. Therefore, all must have a voice. And as your mayor, I can tell you this, I'll not make promises that cannot be met. I will represent all of Cross Lake. And regardless of whether we agree on everything or see things in a different way, I will always tell you the truth. I'm Patty Norgard. I'm asking for your support and your vote on or before November 3rd.
Catherine?
Thank you all for letting me come tonight, and I pray that I probably get your vote. I'm just like you, I sit in front of the TV at night, rock my grandchildren, pay taxes, go to work, enjoy the pickleball courts. And I want to know what our tax dollars do for us and our community. And I hope to listen to you and make decisive decisions on what needs to be done for our community. So I'm asking for your support and your vote on, in November for Catherine Funk.
Erin?
I'd like to thank you. Shout out everyone coming out and everyone that takes the time to listen to us on Facebook. And I would like to thank Marcia and Catherine, they're running a nice, clean campaign, and I think that's important. I don't like the, when you start hurting each other playing games. I think that's an important part, and I would like to say thank you to both of them for that. In conclusion, I am on the council. I would love to continue to serve you and to work with you, to listen to you on what needs are. And I'm asking for you to vote for me. Thank you.
Okay. Marcia?
Well, I was appointed to the, to the city council. I'm confident that my knowledge of city administration experience for over 40 years will be an asset to the city council. I'll do my utmost to go above and beyond to meet goals and ensure timely completion of matters facing the city council. I want to provide positive and conservative fiscal management for the taxpayers of Cross Lake. And if elected, I will serve and contribute to the success of the city of Cross Lake through hard work and attention to details and facts. I feel I have a clear understanding of the council position and administration of the city organization. Lastly, I welcome all community members to play an important role in the success of Cross Lake by being involved and contributing to the future of making Cross Lake a great place to work, play, and live. I look forward to the opportunity to continue to serve on the Cross Lake City Council.
Well, thank you to the candidates and to those of you in attendance and those of you that are watching on Facebook. Remember, it will be on Facebook and played on Facebook up until Election Day. Don't forget to vote. Early voting started September 18th, and Election Day is November 3rd. Stay safe and healthy. Thank you.